November 22nd. Mrs. Capiello will call please.
Mrs. Prince Watson.
Present.
Dr. Francis.
Present.
Ms. McKenzie.
Here.
Mrs. Manisi.
Here.
Mr. O'Shea.
Mrs. Regis Darby.
Ms. Santana.
Present.
Mrs. Scott Hedin.
Here.
Mrs. Williams. Here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Dr. Francis. Mrs. Coon, would you read the Open Public Meetings Act statement, please?
Yes. Good evening. Open Public Meeting Notice. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Act was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice into ten meetings of the public body at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Union Township Board of Education has caused notes of this meeting to be published by having the date time and place thereof published in Starletter and Union County local sources posted in the administrative building of 2369 Morris Avenue in Union, New Jersey, filed with township clerks and mail to all persons, if any, who have requested said notice. During the course of the board meeting, the Board of Education offers members of the public an opportunity to address issues regarding the Union Township Public Schools. The Board reminds those individuals to identify themselves by name and address. First public period comment is for items on the agenda. The second public comment period can be on any issue. Public comments are limited to three minutes respectfully. Issues raised by the members of the public may or may not be responded to by the Board. All comments will be considered and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The Board asks all members of the public to be courteous and mindful of the rights of all other individuals when speaking. Comments regarding students and employees of the Board will not be responded to by the Board.
Thank you, Mrs. Coon. Dr. Francis, would you read the mission statement?
Yes. The mission of Union Township of Public Schools is to build on the foundations of honesty, excellence, integrity, strong family and community partnerships. We promote a supportive learning environment where every student is challenged, inspired, empowered and respected as diverse learners. Through cultivation of students' intellectual curiosity, skills and knowledge, our students can achieve academically and socially and contribute as responsible and productive citizens of our global community.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have comments from the public on resolutions. At this time, we are going to have the approval of honor. Huh? Microphone? You can't hear me?
Testing.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay, so, are there any comments from the public on resolutions tonight? Okay, seeing none, approval of the minutes for September 13th, work session, executive session one, executive session two, and September 20th, regular meeting and executive session. Mrs. Capiello will call please.
Any motion?
Motion? I move. Oh.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Mrs. Manisi, seconded by Ms. Scott Hayden. Mrs. Capiello will call please.
Mrs. Prince Watson.
Yes.
Dr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie.
Yes.
Mrs. Manisi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Santana.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hedin.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams. Yes. At this time, our superintendent is going to have his report.
Thank you. The first order of business under my presentation is to introduce Ms. Piano. I'm going to come up in just a second and grab the handheld mic. Ms. Piano, in turn, is going to introduce some special students who we're spotlighting tonight from Jefferson. Be right there, Ms. Piano.
I have brought two young gentlemen with me tonight from Jefferson School to be honored as our Spotlight Students. First, I would like to introduce Ethan Lima. Come on up, bud. Ethan is an extremely hardworking student with a lot of heart. He is the first to offer a helping hand. He leads in the classroom by example. If something needs to be done, he will pitch in and get it done. We often see him mentoring a student who is struggling with something. He is patient and kind. Ethan reminds others around him of assignments or keeps them focused on the goal at hand. Ethan takes great pride in all of his work. Ethan is community-minded with a heart for service. He brings a positive mindset, enthusiasm and diligence to our days at Jefferson. We are so proud of him and appreciate all he does for our school community. He is an all-star with a huge heart. Earlier this year, Ethan was nominated for our school-wide program called Caught Being a Leader by his gym teachers. In gym, he went above and beyond helping and guiding students in our autistic program. He showed true kindness, empathy and patience with his peers throughout this activity. Congratulations, Ethan.
Mr. Francis, would you read the mission statement?
Yes. The mission of Union Township of Public Schools is to build on the foundations of honesty, excellence, integrity, strong family and community partnerships. We promote a supportive learning environment where every student is challenged, inspired, empowered and respected as diverse learners. Through cultivation of students' intellectual curiosity, skills and knowledge, our students can achieve academically and socially and contribute as responsible and productive citizens of our global community.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have comments from the public on resolutions. At this time, we are going to have the approval of honor. Huh? Microphone? You can't hear me?
Testing.
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay, so, are there any comments from the public on resolutions tonight? Okay, seeing none, approval of the minutes for September 13th, work session, executive session one, executive session two, and September 20th, regular meeting and executive session. Mrs. Capiello will call please.
Any motion?
Motion? I move. Oh.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Mrs. Manisi, seconded by Ms. Scott Hayden. Mrs. Capiello will call please.
Mrs. Prince Watson.
Yes.
Dr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie.
Yes.
Mrs. Manisi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Santana.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hedin.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
At this time, our superintendent is going to have his report.
Thank you. The first order of business under my presentation is to introduce Ms. Piano. I'm going to come up in just a second and grab the handheld mic. Ms. Piano, in turn, is going to introduce some special students who we're spotlighting tonight from Jefferson. Be right there, Ms. Piano.
I have brought two young gentlemen with me tonight from Jefferson School to be honored as our Spotlight Students. First, I would like to introduce Ethan Lima. Come on up, bud. Ethan is an extremely hardworking student with a lot of heart. He is the first to offer a helping hand. He leads in the classroom by example. If something needs to be done, he will pitch in and get it done. We often see him mentoring a student who is struggling with something. He is patient and kind. Ethan reminds others around him of assignments or keeps them focused on the goal at hand. Ethan takes great pride in all of his work. Ethan is community-minded with a heart for service. He brings a positive mindset, enthusiasm and diligence to our days at Jefferson. We are so proud of him and appreciate all he does for our school community. He is an all-star with a huge heart. Earlier this year, Ethan was nominated for our school-wide program called Caught Being a Leader by his gym teachers. In gym, he went above and beyond helping and guiding students in our autistic program. He showed true kindness, empathy and patience with his peers throughout this activity. Congratulations, Ethan. I would now like to introduce our next Spotlight Student, Preston King Peepel. Come on up, Preston. If you have ever wanted to meet a student that deserves to be in the Spotlight, it is definitely Preston Peepel. He has an amazing soul, is courteous to all students, an enthusiastic learner and helpful to students and staff. Preston spends once a month volunteering at the food pantry and soup kitchen in Union. He even does chores around the house and takes care of his bearded dragon Mango and his cat named Buddy. Preston is an honest young man with a heart of gold. We are so happy to have him in class every day. Preston was also nominated earlier this year for Caught Being a Leader. In computer class, he made sure all of his classmates understood the assignment that was given. He helped another student that was having difficulty and was giving her the thumbs up to make sure if she needed more help. Way to lead by example, Preston. Congrats.
At this time, I will let the families who have arrived and Ms. Piano, of course, that will not be offended if you step out and don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting. So now's your cue as I get ready to transition to something else, which is an update for the Board and the community on how things are going at Union High School. I've invited Ms. Bostard, our intern principal at the high school, and Ms. Hykowsky, our newly-minted coordinator of restorative practices. They're going to take over in just a minute, but before we do that, I want to point out a couple of things. First of all, I think we'd all agree, last year was a very difficult year, particularly at the high school. We firmly believe, I firmly believe, based on a lot of input we've been receiving from students, we've turned things around. And a lot of that has to do with the five prongs that I talked about last year. Reregistration efforts, providing more structure and discipline and accountability to the high school community, the way we were working with students who were expressing behavior problems. The creation of the position coordinator of restorative practices, which has taken off. Introduction of the EDP, which we'll hear more about tonight, that's the extended day program. And I think that's it. Those are the prongs. Forgive me if I said five, I meant four. Let me give you a quick update on reregistration. So we are actually down to fourteen individuals who we've confirmed have not reregistered. And these are individuals whose residences we're investigating right now using our own private investigators. We have two. And so, we're going through the process of sending letters, sending out the investigators and then if necessary, providing them paperwork that says, hey, you're going to have to now transfer out of Union High School back to whatever school in your current residence, your real residence. I do want to point out some data that I can't with a hundred percent confidence associate with reregistration, but I think it's helpful for us to see that since August 5th, that was the day we opened up the reregistration portal in Genesis and started pushing real hard to get kids reregistered, one hundred and fifty-five exited since that day up until yesterday. This data is since yesterday. Of those hundred and fifty-five students, fifty-seven students transferred to a different school. Now, mind you, we're talking August. Obviously, some of these students had plans with their families to move out of district, but that number is unusually high. So we suppose that thanks to the Board and administration's efforts to go ahead with this reregistration program, we exited a good number of students back to their real high schools of residence. So those are the numbers. I'll try to provide another update as soon as the data becomes refreshed, i.e. what happens with these fourteen students once the investigations are complete. And I'm sure Ms. Manici, Ms. Scott Hayden and the reregistration, I'm sorry, the student residency committee, thank you for clarifying, will also update the Board. Before I introduce Ms. Hykowsky, I do want to echo something that I put out in a message tonight to our community. And this is very important. It's top of the heap of our strategic plan. It's something that I actually baked into the plan, knowing that one of my charges when I came here was to take a vision that I had been told has been talked about a lot over years, this idea of academy, something, by the way, that's become kind of, not old, but certainly not pioneering. Yeah, I believe Hillside has academies, Springfield, I created an academy in Kenilworth when I was there called the Kenilworth Scholars Academy, to which we're losing some eighth graders, by the way. I've been signing off on some paperwork for the Kenilworth Scholars Academy, which is a little bit of irony. So as the strategic plan indicates, we're supposed to have a team visit Red Bank Regional High School and some other schools in the state that do this well and have done it for many years, so they can talk about the successes and the failures that they've experienced along the way. So a team went, and by the way, this is the strategic plan action step to which I referred. If you look at the strategic plan, this is the first goal, has to do with academic achievement. We're not looking to do the academy model overnight. This is going to take several years. But we took the first step. We took them to visit by, we, I'm talking about Ms. Bostard, Ms. Ahern, our supervisor of counseling, Jeremy Cohen and Randy Hutchinson, our directors of curriculum, Dr. Perez, Mr. Benacquista, myself, I think, Ms. Coon, you were there as well. And we all took a look at what they're doing at Red Bank Regional. And what we came away realizing is that we already have a strong foundation on which to build our academies. And that is something that the directors of curriculum, Jeremy Cohen, Randy Hutchinson and, according to Ahern, supervisor of councils, created a couple of years ago called Pathways. We currently have a semi-magnet program in our high school called Pathways. And you can read more about it if you go to the district website and you go to the high school site and you go under student resources, you'll see there's a link that'll take you right to Pathways. The Pathways allows high school students right now to concentrate some of their courses in certain career areas, four of them. So what we're looking to do is build on what's already working for us, thanks to what those folks who I just mentioned put together. On top of that, however, I'd like to build a fifth academy, which I would call the Union High School Scholars Academy. And I'll be really upfront with everybody in the room, the reason why I did it in Kenilworth, the reason why I want to do it here, we deserve to keep our top students right here and not have to go to magnet or not have to go to some alternative. I'm not going to get into the details about what that academy would look like yet, but it'll come. I certainly have a clear vision for it and we'll slowly be realizing that vision. We're looking at these academies being a four-year series of programs. Students would have many courses together, but also take courses with the general student population. I do want to point out very clearly that those students who wouldn't qualify, not qualify, who wouldn't be interested in an academy, would still be given a comprehensive high school program like we offer right now. So this isn't like you have to choose a pathway, because we all know at the age of fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, you might not have a clue what you want to do. I certainly didn't know I wanted to get into teaching until I was a sophomore in college, let alone, you know, a sophomore in high school. So we would still offer a general program for all students who don't fit into the academy model. Culminating activity for the academy would be an internship slash mentorship out in the field. And in several academies' cases, it would culminate in certification that could lead to some kind of professional endeavor. So that could mean if we have an instructional technology, an IT academy, it could mean getting your Cisco Cert, which allows you to become an information technology technician or specialist, work on wireless access points, or you can get C++ certified, be a computer scientist and do coding. Now, kids can do this in college if they go over to a four-year school, part-time. So it's not like we would be giving them certifications and say, okay, do whatever. We'd be giving them something that can add to their experience in college. Now, with that, I'm going to pass the mic to Ms. Hykowsky, because none of this could happen unless we have a strong culture and climate in high school. We're realizing that right now, but a lot of it has to do with what these two individuals have led since September, actually, I should say since the summer, because a lot of your work happened over the summer. Love the mantra, which you see on everything that goes out from the high school, it's all about restoring, repairing, healing and connecting. So with that, Ms. Hykowsky, I'm going to hand the mic to you. And I'm going to give you the power.
Good evening, everybody. And now that I'm introduced, I'm going to turn over to Ms. Bostard first. She's going to say a few words before I get into things.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it. So as Dr. Taylor mentioned, we did meet quite frequently over the summer and included Ms. Hykowsky in our meetings along with Ms. Hall. And it was very important to us to not have an environment where the students felt like they were being pounded on with consequences and punishments, but we wanted them to feel that the school was their own with holding them accountable at the same time. So we didn't want to do the traditional ISS anymore. Ms. Hykowsky went to a lot of workshops over the summer. She brought back incredible information, which we use to restructure how we did in-school suspension, which is something I didn't really care for when I was here as a VP, the way that it was structured. So with her bringing this information, it was perfect timing to make the changes so that it was more effective for the students and we didn't consistently see repeat offenders. So she'll explain all of that.
Hi, everyone. First of all, thank you for having me tonight. I am going to talk a little bit about restorative practices. I did attend a lot of workshops. Probably the most beneficial one I attended was Making the Transition. And what I really liked about it was that the presenter came from a district very similar to ours. And so, the programs that he presented to us really seemed to apply to Union. And one of the strengths, of course, of me being here is that, for those of you who don't know me, I taught in the ELA classroom here in Union for twenty-four years. And so, I know the kids and I was able to sort of take those programs and apply them to the high school. So first of all, just a general idea of what restorative practices are. It is derived from restorative justice and it is restorative justice for school systems. When I tell the kids I'm the coordinator of restorative practice, they're like, what? And I tell them, basically what it means is a community builder, somebody who is going to connect to them, connect to their teachers and work to see a whole child as opposed to an infraction or a disciplinary action. And I do a lot of conflict resolution, but it is about restoring, repairing, healing and connecting. Okay, so, there's intervention. I've basically broken it down into two ways for you to look at it right now. There's intervention, which I'm going to get to in a minute, that's the programs that we have revamped in-school and in-school suspension. But there's also the preventative, and that is the community-building activities. Last week, we ran a wellness week, which was my first sort of, give it a shot and see how it goes, and it was extraordinarily successful. We brought in speakers that were geared toward grade levels. So on Monday and Tuesday, we had Keith Strickland from Making the Transition. He spoke to our ninth graders. And I have kept in touch with him. He wants to serve us, even from Atlanta where he is. We're going to set up a virtual program with some of our students who were really affected by the things that he had to say. And then we had, Wednesday, we had Dr. Michael Fallon and Dennis Maralda, and they did a presentation to our eleventh graders, and that was entitled From What's Your Problem to What's Your Story? Again, that desire to see the whole child as opposed to whatever issue that they're currently having. And then on Thursday, the martial arts program came in, Bomb Two Martial Arts, and they did a presentation, an introduction to self-defense. One of the reasons that I had them come in and another sort of thread that ran through all of these presentations was the idea of what it means to defend oneself. Because the problem that I was seeing in talking to kids about why they were fighting or why there was conflict was a misinterpretation of what it means to defend yourself, right? If I get into an argument with Ms. Bostard and Ms. Bostard challenges me to a fight and I participate in that fight, I am not defending myself. I am participating in an altercation, all right? So we have spoken to many, many students about what it actually means to protect yourself. And that was a thread that ran through all of these presentations. Bomb Two Martial Arts was a success. I ran it through the FIS Ed department. Again, as coordinator, that's kind of the idea, right? I am reaching out to all of the different departments, all the different programs that we have. we have, and connecting them, uh, to our at-risk students. Um, and they enjoyed it so much, the afternoon kids were upset they didn't get it, so we're hoping to have them back in December for, uh, the students who missed out on the presentation. And then Friday, I had Deloitte Academy, um, Dr. Taylor mentioned the, uh, Pathways program. Um, I am the liaison for the Government Law and Politics Pathway, and for the Business Management Pathway. And so I brought, uh, a former student, Sabrina Prevost, here, she was class of 2017, and she made a presentation, uh, her and her colleagues from Deloitte. Um, they gave away, um, gift cards, the kids had a blast. Um, I opened it up, again, I, I, uh, went to the, uh, the supervisor of business, I connected with him, his, his teachers gave me the names of five students that he thought would benefit from it, and then I added the Ban, the Business Management Pathway kids. And she's coming back, um, she wants to pursue a law degree, so she's gonna come back and speak to our Government Law and Politics kids as well. Um, so it really was a success. These are just some of the pictures, this was the Deloitte Academy, um, presentation. And they, all, all the students who attended got put on their list for future scholarships, just by attending it, um, so that was great. These are the presenters, this is Dr. Michael Fallon, um, this is Dennis Maralda, that's from What's Your Problem to What's Your Story. Uh, Dennis would also like to come back, I'm going to touch base with him, he would also like to come back, he does faculty presentations. One of the directions that I'm really hoping to go is more connections for the faculty. Uh, that's Keith Strickland, um, presenting to our ninth graders. That's another picture from Deloitte. The first kid that got the Subway gift card was just like, uh-huh. Um, and that is the Bomb Two Martial Arts School. Okay, so we have preventative restorative practice, which is, I, I'm running restorative lunches right now, periods five, six, seven, and eight. Uh, a lot of students who have difficulty, um, functioning in the cafeteria, students who get into arguments there, um, students who were involved in some fighting last year are now having restorative lunches with me. Um, we sit together, we talk about, uh, what's going on, a lot of them tell me that it is very helpful in calming them down and taking them out of situations they don't wanna be a part of. I also, um, am, am one of the advisors for the National Honor Society, and so what I've done is connect students who are in, in-school suspension with a tutor. So instead of students just, and I know Ms. Bossard and I agree, um, instead of students coming in and opening a Chromebook and sitting in front of a Chromebook all day, looking like they're doing work, um, I check their grades, I see what subjects they're having difficulty in, and I set them up with a National Honor Society peer tutor, uh, during those periods. Um, and that has been very helpful to them as well. The last thing is accountability projects. Um, one of the ways in which we're headed, I'd like to see more of this, I just started doing them. Um, accountability projects are after a student, uh, gets into something with a, a teacher or a staff member, um, we talk about it. For example, um, I had one student who put an inappropriate post on the Anime Club website. And the teacher was very offended by, the advisor was very offended by the post, he didn't really understand why it was offensive. We sat in the library while he was in, uh, structured day, which I'll get to in a minute, we talked about the issue, and he drafted an email apology to the teacher and his fellow Anime Club members. Um, some students are actually reading their emails to other teachers, uh, if something happens, say with a custodian, uh, we can bring the student to apologize to the custodian wherever the infraction happened. And it seems, again, um, it's a learning experience for, for everyone involved. And then there's intervention, and that's structured day in traditional ISS. The only reason I'm calling it traditional ISS is 'cause that's what it says on Genesis, I don't even really like the name very much. But, um, structured day is students who are consistently late to class, students who have been cutting class, what do you do with them? Well, um, I have a, a duty teacher per period, and so what we've been doing is escorting students to their classes. So we take them, and then we pick them up a couple minutes early, and we bring them to the next class. Um, one of the great things about it is, not only does that ensure that the student is not missing instructional time for their, from their teachers, but it also, there's a lot of spontaneous conversation that happens in the hallway. Sometimes students don't wanna come face-to-face and talk to you about something, but if you're just walking down the hall with them and having a casual conversation, and I have to say, Ms. Bossard has been incredibly supportive, the teachers who are on the duty are also being just incredibly supportive about opening up a conversation with kids, very carefully about what's going on. Um, and then I'm doing two-week check-ins, so after a student's been in ISS or in structured day, um, I'm calling them, just checking in on them every two weeks to see how they're doing. So there's a continuation. Um, I've had teachers who are on duty offer to check in on kids that they have, um, if they're having trouble in other periods, um, for the rest of the year, they're offering to do it. So again, that's the community building that we're looking for. Um, where we're headed, I have a lot of the, the skillset, I have a lot of the drive and the passion, the only thing that was lacking for me was the academic background, so I just was accepted to the International Institute for Restorative Practice, their master's program. And so I'm hoping in that regard to get the academic background to support all of the programs that I'm, that I'm working with. Um, I want to have more events like Wellness Week, um, including Plans for a Community Garden, that's a three-year plan for me, um, and involvement with Club Unified. A lot of our at-risk kids do really well with our special education programs, they, they enjoy being with them, they enjoy helping out, and I, I talked to Lauren Kohn about, um, just sort of, again, that outreach, that community connection. Um, more student-driven accountability, um, both Ms. Bossard and Dr. Taylor said the magic word, which is accountability. A lot of people have the misconception that restorative practice means no punishment, that is not what it means. It takes away the punitive, but it replaces it with more accountability. So students have to look at what they've done and try to understand why it was wrong. All right? Um, and, uh, I also wanna, uh, expand the peer tutoring into sort of like a buddy program. A lot of the students who are in structured day are ninth and 10th graders, uh, the VPs for the ninth and 10th grade have been wonderful about setting me up with students. I'm hoping to kinda buddy them up with an 11th or 12th grader that, um, that they can kinda rely on, not just academically, but socially and emotionally as well, and sort of like a buddy program, um, so that they'll be checked on throughout the year. Oh, and then of course, the seminars and trainings for staff, that is another way that, um, I'd like to see the, the program grow. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Bossard for EDP. Thank you very much.
I do have to say thank you to Ms. Hykowsky, she works incredibly hard, um, every day to, um, ensure that our students are learning from their actions, which I think, um, is something that's missing right now. We don't, you know, there's not, doesn't seem to be that much accountability across, um, the world, so to speak. So I think it's important for them to understand what that accountability looks like and means, especially if they do something wrong to a staff member, or they say something negative to someone, um, that they actually go up to them and apologize, and discuss, you know, why, what they did was wrong. Um, so I do have to commend her every day for, she comes to me and says, "What do you think of this?" "I, go for it, let's do it." "Um, is this okay?" "Go for it, let's do it." Um, so anything for the students to assist and, and help them, um, become more productive citizens is what we're, we're really striving for. Um, I do wanna say thank you to the board for bringing back EDP. We had it, um, when I was here as a vice principal, I believe, for a couple of years, and then it was gone. Um, but it's back. Uh, I do think it is a huge deterrent, um, for most of our population. You are going to have some pockets of students who sometimes, no matter what the consequence, they're going to do what they wanna do. That's just the reality of, uh, kids, they're kids, so they'll make decisions that we may not like. So, um, EDP, kids get placed in EDP based on, um, their infraction. So if we have students, vaping is a very huge issue right now, um, in the bathrooms and in other areas of the building. Um, we try very hard to, uh, security will go into the bathrooms and, you know, sometimes we have reasonable suspicion to conduct a search, not on the student, just on their, uh, belongings. Um, and sometimes we find things, and then we send them out to be tested, um, their test comes back positive, there's consequences for that. If their test comes back positive twice, we place them in night school for a couple weeks. So in the past, we had night school for 45 days, um, with the restorative practices, I really did not want to do that. Um, I thought it was excessive, um, to keep them away from the regular day school for that length of time. So we constructed a plan for exactly, um, what the infraction is that they would be attending. Uh, fighting is about two weeks. Um, we did have an incident where, uh, some students called 911, and, uh, female student said that she was being assaulted. That's a lot more severe, um, because the police are calling us, they're coming to the school, they're trying to figure out exactly what happened. That's a four-week stay. Um, sometimes things happen within EDP that may extend their stay. Um, but our goal is to counsel, Ms. Hall counsels with them every single day before they start their schedule. Uh, Mr. Ruddy is instrumental in creating the schedules for each and every student that attends EDP. Um, they work, the teachers that work EDP work very closely with the daytime teachers. We've had students that are not doing well in school when they start EDP, and then their grades shoot up during EDP and when they go back, because it's a smaller environment, um, it's one-to-one attention, uh, the teachers are working closely with each student. One of our teachers has a notebook where he's keeping track of all the work that the students are doing, everything that they're doing, um, in night school. And so we've had students who have requested to stay. Um, you know, the high school is quite large for a lot of people, uh, some kids don't feel comfortable, um, because of how many kids are there, it's crowded, and so we have had some that say, "Can I stay in night school?" Of course, our answer is no, um, that we want them to transition back. Um, but we do, at the end, have a contract that they have to sign. Um, we meet with them to let them know that they're heading back to school, um, what that would look like, what the expectations are of them, that we would be checking in with them as well. The contract stipulates a GPA that we expect them to maintain, uh, grades that we expect them to maintain in their classes. It also discusses behavior and what our expectations are as far as behavior when they return to the regular day school. And then if they do not adhere to the things on the contract, that there's a possibility that they will end up back, um, in night school. Um, it, it, it is, um, a deterrent, um, but they're not treated like they're necessarily, it's held here, we keep it in the A-Wing, um, they'll switch classes from class to class, they have Phys Ed, they have Health, there's Driver's Ed right now for the sophomores. Um, we order pizza for them, Mr. Ruddy was ordering pizza for them every Friday, Ms. Fisk today, um, ordered pizza for the students. So they're not treated any differently, um, we respect them, they respect us, there's not a negative interaction when we see them, um, there's lots of love. I did have students one day ordered Wendy's, which the kids are not allowed to have food, Door dashed and Ubered to the building. So I warmed all the food up and gave it to the kids in, uh, ADP, so they were happy to have it. So we, we care about them, we care about their growth and development, as well as their academics and behavior. So it's important to us to not have them feel like they're that different from the rest of the students in the building. And I would say they probably get, uh, more than our kids during the regular day, 'cause we're not buying 2,300 kids pizza, um, on a Friday. So we're really trying to let them know that we care about them. The biggest thing for me, being back, um, and the restore, repair, heal, and connect, um, the connection for me with the students was very important back then, and it is now. Um, and I think when they know that you genuinely care about them, and you genuinely want to see them succeed, it changes them. And I think that they, um, are appreciative of what we're doing. Um, I think that there would be a lot more, um, dissension from them, not liking the changes and the accountability. So I think that everyone craves structure, we as adults need structure, right? So I think the students definitely like having the structured environment. Would I love to get away from having EDP? Absolutely, I'd love for us to get to the place where they make the decisions on their own and see that their actions are not what they should be doing in school. So I would love for, for them to say, you know what, and I, I do have to say, the fighting, um, the kids are tired of it. So they have been coming to us to let us know, something happened today, uh, someone told a student that, uh, someone wanted to fight him, uh, he walks into the bathroom, there's some students there, he walked out and came to the main office. So I think we're really starting to see a shift and a change. We're trying to tell them, "Come to us, we're the problem solvers. Come, talk to the adults in the building, let us problem solve, let us figure it out for you, let us fight your battles for you. You don't go and, you know, fight the battles, let us do it for you." So we are quick to call the parents as soon as we hear anything at all, um, we are not shy about that whatsoever. So the parents are informed immediately when things happen, so I think that's it. Oh, number of students? We currently have had, uh, 23 altogether, right now we have 11 only. Um, after Thanksgiving break, it will be down to nine, um, and then it will continue to dwindle down, uh, from there. Hopefully no one else, um, comes in, so, thank you.
Couple of closing comments, and then I'd like to open up to the board if there are any questions, um, then I'll send you guys home. So, two things. One, regarding restorative practices, the idea here is not just to have one person be the restorative practice point person, like, that's it, and it's only what you saw, it's about the culture of the school, so that everybody in the school, the teachers, the students, the parents, the residents, they get it, they get what you saw. So it's gonna take some time, but part of the, the, the way we change culture, I mean, Michael Fallon is a researcher, he talks about this, it's like research-based stuff, you've gotta build in the routines that you've heard about and that you saw, 'cause once the routines and the language is repeated over and over again, in a couple of years, people start to like, be conditioned to think it, just like it was for us last year, the kids were conditioned to think that fighting was the only way out, they're gonna start thinking that restorative practices is the only way in. The other thing I wanna point out is that regarding EDP, Dr. Perez has been leading her crew into the EDP world to, um, uh, to evaluate the, um, instructional effectiveness of the program, making sure that our teachers are getting the support they need, the PD that they need. And, um, there was another piece I wanted to bring up. Oh, yes, the counselors, thank you. We are, uh, requesting that the board approve, uh, my recommendation that we add more counselors to the list, so that we can have, uh, a menu of counselors, in some cases, to use to match up with the right personalities of the kids who are in EDP, 'cause we all know that it's like, you know, it's like when you're working out, you can't just use certain ways, you gotta use the things that, that make you feel comfortable, the same thing with counselors and kids. So that's why we're asked to, uh, expand the number of counselors that we're gonna provide to EDP. So with that, are there any questions from the board? I'll defer to these guys if, if you have any, yeah.
I actually don't have any, oh, sorry, Anna.
Sorry.
I don't have any questions, I just wanna say that I'm really happy that we're here. Um, again, everybody out there knows my son, um, and this is something that would've benefited children like him. And so I'm really, really happy to see that we've gotten to this point, and I know that Ms. Scott Hayton was really, um, in favor of this, and she pushed really hard. So I'm happy to see what we're doing, and I'm excited to see what the results are.
I have to give Ms. Scott Hayton a quick shout-out, uh, again, because you, first of all, helped provide resources- helped provide resources. We did try to hook up with Montclair, we're going to still try to do that because they're doing a lot of good stuff. And also, you're the one who helped me reshape the title from dean to coordinator so it becomes more of a support idea here than a punitive thing. Ms. Meneses?
I just wanted to say thank you. This was something that I, the EDP program that I had discussed with Mr. Benacquista several years ago, because I always ask, "Are these repeat offenders?" And we know it's a cry for help. And so, thank you for what you're doing. And my, I guess my question is, and maybe I missed it in the discussion, when they have transitioned back to full-time day, in the academics, are they successful? Good. Because I know that's very difficult, you know, to go from a small setting. I was a special ed teacher, so going from a very small setting into the larger setting, sometimes it's difficult, but with all the right supports, it's a great thing.
So, we do have special ed teachers that work in EDP for students that may have an IEP as well. It is, you know, they head back to the environment where all their friends are again. The same challenges occur as well. And so, it is a transition for them to really try to stay focused and on target. Any, one of the things I can say, and one of the security guards can attest to this, any student that comes into my office, the first thing I do is pull up their grade book and I'll discuss it with them. And our students really don't know what a zero does to their grade. They have no clue. So, I've sat with every single one, I do the calculations. Okay, now we have three grades, you've got two zeros, what do we divide by now? And before you had an eighty-five, now it's dropped down to a forty-two and they're like, "What?" So, but it's still a, you know, we're dealing with a lot of peer pressure and them wanting to be cool with their friends and to try to convince them that they're going to be signing their paychecks later on down the road is hard. I tell them that. You know, you can push forward and you can do well because the kids that might make fun of you for coming out of whatever you came out of are the ones who will be asking you for a job later on in life. So, trying to teach them those things, to really focus on them and their own education, I tell them, "Your education is the one thing you have in life that no one can take away from you." It literally is. Everything else can be gone in a second, but your education is the one thing we all have that no one can actually take it away unless it was fake. You know, then you have to give it back. But, you know, we try really hard to have those real-life discussions with them to help them, but we do try to stay on top of them to ensure that they're, and then the Title I program is starting up at the end of December, I believe, January. So, that's going to be something else that we'll have in place for them to ensure that they're getting the help that they need after school as well.
Because the transition can be difficult.
Yes.
And you have everything in place, so we're very fortunate. Thank you.
Hikaski?
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for the work that you're doing because this has been long needed in our district. And, you know, it is just amazing what we can do. And I love what you said about people thinking, it's sad that people will think that restorative practices means no punishment when it clearly is more of a path for students to become part of a community, and I absolutely love that. I do have a couple of questions. The first one is in regards to the restorative week that you had. What was the rationale for the different programs, for the different grades? Because it seemed like all of the grades could have benefited somehow from each one of those programs.
Yes, thank you for the question. I was looking for, we were looking for a way to reach every student and that it can be incredibly difficult. Most of the speakers, when you ask them to come and talk, they don't, they want to speak to a smaller group. I know, for example, Keith Strickland actually asked to speak to ninth graders when he came because the issues that he dealt with started for him when he was in, like, eighth, ninth grade. So, he specifically asked. So, it was a matter of you ha, even if you, I invited them for two sessions. If you have a speaker come in to speak to everybody, you're talking about six, seven-hundred kids at one time and it's just not feasible. No matter how powerful a speaker is, the two-hundred, three-hundred kids in the back are just not getting that same experience. And I wanted them to be able to have a smaller group thing. So, like, even just splitting the freshman class in half wasn't enough. Like, if we, Ms. Bossard and I talked about it after, if we were to do it again, we would split them into four because a lot of them, you know, just, they're ninth graders, you know? And later on in the day, we actually, the kids who were very engaged, we walked around and handed passes to them and they were able to come back ninth period and have, like, a debrief or further discussion with the speaker. So, it was really just logistical.
All right. No, I, thank you, and that makes absolute sense. I think the small group setting is so much more beneficial for everybody. But my second question had to do with, well, first of all, congratulations on pursuing your masters.
Thank you.
I think it's amazing. But the second, and maybe I missed it, Dr. Taylor is, you know, is correct in saying that this cannot be the work of one or two people.
Correct.
So, what are we doing for our faculty and our staff to become more involved and more, you know, informed about?
That's a very good question. So, the intervention-wise, right? So, having those teachers start to actually do the restorative duty. So, that's one way we're starting to bring the faculty in. And so, every period, there are two teachers that work with me, they're now getting the restorative practice as well. And again, the, in term, like, I, for the Professional Development Day, I ran a Professional Development, two sessions for the teachers. My sole goal in getting the masters is to then turnkey to the entire faculty so that when I'm gone or when Ms. Bossard's gone, that that gets, all of these programs are meant to run themselves at some point.
The smart way to do it. Thank you so much.
And I'd like to add, my vision would be in a year or two, we've talked about this, to somehow incorporate into the high school schedule, twenty to thirty minutes of circle talk time at least once a week so that kids can get into these, what they call circles, restorative circles, that are already happening in various places like Ms. Hall's office, and they're happening at a micro level here, but that happens once a week. You have a gratitude circle on a Friday, remind kids that there's goodness in the world, in their world. So, that's, that would engage the whole school. But that's going to take time. We've got to get buy-in first.
I was just going to say, we have to move slowly on the staff end because they are being thrown a lot. So, we have to not tread lightly, but take our time with not throwing something else that we're saying, "We expect you to do this right away." It is going to take some time for them to grasp exactly what it entails, which is starting off with the teachers that do the duties with her. But it's going to, it's just, it's going to take some time to just get everybody on board because then it will turn into the same language like she said, that everybody, their brains are just wired, same thing Dr. Taylor said, to just even in their classrooms while they're teaching, if something happens, they can say, "You know what? Let's do a restorative circle real quick to just end whatever is happening right now." So, hopefully, we'll get to that point where we'll be able to do that.
It's a culture shift, right? And some people will take better to it than others, some will need a little bit more help than others, and those are the ones that I'm more concerned with, getting them there.
Ms. Santana?
Yes, sir. So, I guess I want, once again, echoing everybody's thank-yous, right? It's been a long time coming to get to where we are now. And I guess my vision, my desire, my love for this district is to be proactive, right? And not come to it from a reactive standpoint because we should be getting out ahead of it. But what I'm learning, sitting here and going through this process, is that it's a slow thing, right? It's a slow journey. So, thank you for that. And I guess, I'm not sure if this is more to you, Dr. Taylor, so why aren't we seeing this in different levels? I know, I get it, you know, certain presenters, they want to market to, like, ninth graders or this one, but I think that this is something that should be, it's easier if we get them smaller because if by the time they get, like, what's the saying, right? It's easier to, you know, raise a boy than fix a broken man, right? So, the elementary level, what are we doing? At the middle school level, what are we doing? So that maybe at this high school level, it'll be different.
Here's how it's going to go.
Yeah.
I brought responsive classroom to the school addition. We have fifteen teachers throughout the elementary schools right now incorporating that in their classroom. That is essentially restorative practices for thirty minutes a day at the elementary level. We trained our teachers over the summer. These fifteen teachers are going to be lead turnkey teachers to their peers. And between next school year and the following school year, it's baked into the strategic plan, every elementary classroom is going to incorporate this strategy. And the kids, I think I've talked to the board in my report about this, basically, the kids are in circles and they're talking to each other, they're learning how to greet each other, they're learning how to share, they're learning how to build trust and relationships. Now, I am thinking, and you know this, Ms. Hikaski, because we talked about this when I interviewed you, of the need for us to bring restorative practices to the middle school level because responsive classroom, it doesn't work at the middle school level. But we've got to start somewhere. And our thinking, my thinking was, I think everybody around the room would agree, we had to start at the high school because that was like at DEFCON four last year.
Yeah.
Well, we're going to meet, we're going to feed our way down. And I envision creating perhaps another position like Ms. Hikaski's but for the middle school level because there's no way Ms. Hikaski can do both middle school and high school. Do you want to say something?
No, I just wanted to say, I should have said, actually, Mr. Strickland did come to the eighth grade. He did speak at Kwame and Burnett.
Thanks. Nice for that, yeah.
So, we're on the same page.
Yeah. And I think that the only other thing that I wanted to say is that, so, once again, we're all going through learning processes, right, sitting here at the C. Our one employee here is you, but I want to hear from everyone, right? It all starts with conversation. Sometimes I feel that sitting on the board, it's kind of like, "Oh, no, we're untouchable." I want to hear everybody's comments, good, bad, or indifferent, please share them. And I think that all my peers, my colleagues, all feel the same way. Thank you. If there's anything that we can do, I know Ms. Hall knows that. If there's anything that we can do, if it's just to hear it and then kind of dissect it or Tetris it later, that's what, thank you.
To honor that, I'll do what I did with the board. I invited the board to see responsive classroom in the classroom. I'll do the same for, we'll work something out. And I won't be there.
Invite me. I, you know that.
Yeah.
I want to go, I want to see it.
And I won't be there so you could walk in there and hear it for real?
Yes.
So, there's no me. Did you have a question, Ms. Scott Hayden?
No, I just was, I had a comment, actually. I don't have any questions at this time, but I will be remiss if I didn't say thank you, right? This is something that was near and dear to my heart because I feel like every child needs to be seen and met where they are. We always talk about educating the whole child and that's the first process to that, right? I would just say that going forward, whatever supports that you need, I gave Dr. Taylor quite a few. I know Montclair, like I told him before, Montclair School District has a whole extensive program that is recognized by the state and by the nation around restorative practices. So, as we look and move into the summer months, I will hope that we will partner, have some of our teachers who are already taking some of those classes to make sure that we keep educating them so that we can move the program further along and also expand it out so that it is reaching our middle school and our elementary schools eventually at some point, but also making sure that they're continuously learning so that they are better for our students, right? So, as we move this process along, we know what their needs are but also meeting our educators' needs around this work so that we're not just putting them out there in a way of saying, "Just do this or do that." I mean, they're doing a whole lot for our students, but we want to make sure that we're going to do it, we're going to be thorough, we're going to be the number two at the Montclair, right? Or maybe number one. We'll take the number one spot.
Montclair app.
But I'll just say to you again, thank you because I know that the task is not light. And I just want you to know that we do appreciate you for taking on that work, both of you. And congratulations to a great school year.
So, there are no questions, no other questions or comments, I'm going to send you both home. So, thank you for being here. I'll see you tomorrow. I'm sure I'll be in the school.
Thank you so much for coming by and helping us. Thank you.
And with that, I just want to, my last slide I want to share here is just the latest data on HIV cases. We did have fifteen cases, nine of which were not found and six are, six were. And of course, you know, the board can always ask me follow-up questions about the cases if they are concerned or have any questions. Like, I'll do, like I did last year, required to do, I'll provide a mid-year report so you can compare numbers, increase, decrease, and see where that's going. So, that concludes my long report. Back to you.
So, we can start moving forward with our education and discipline. I can hear you because this is in close, but I don't know if anybody else can hear you. We can't hear you, Mary.
You cannot hear. All right, we're moving to Education, Student Discipline Committee resolutions. Ms. Scott Hayden, please.
Yes, I'll be moving these in block. The Education, Student Discipline Committee moves the following resolutions, E1 through E5, and I'm moving them in block. Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Scott Hayden, seconded by Ms. Meneses. Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brins Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yeah.
Mrs. Meneses?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea, would you do fiscal for me?
Thank you, Madam President. Professional and Planning Committee, Resolution 1, F1 through F6. F7 has already been approved at last, the board's last workshop. F7A through F31, F32, which is strictly for information only, F33 to F36 for approval.
Second.
Moved by Mr. O'Shea, seconded by Ms. McKenzie. No discussion, correct? You're passing these in a block? So, Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brins Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Meneses?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
We have nothing for grievance. Operations, Ms. Meneses.
Upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Operation Committee presents the following resolutions for the board's consideration, O1 and O2.
Okay, may I have a second, please?
Second.
That Ms. Brins Watson, moved by Ms. Meneses. Ms. Brins Watson, seconded, Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brins Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Meneses?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Personnel Committee, Ms. McKenzie, please.
Upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Personnel Committee presents the following resolutions for the board's consideration, P1A with the exception of P1A12 through P6.
Moved by Ms. McKenzie, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Scott Hayden. Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brins Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Meneses?
Yes.
Ms. O'Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Santana, policy, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Policy Committee presents the following policies for the board's consideration, and this is the final reading. Policy one is approval of Policy 2425. Policy two is approval of Regulation 2425. Policy three is approval of Policy 5512. Policy four is approval of Policy 5700. Policy five is approval of Policy 2415.50.
Okay, moved by Ms. Santana, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McKenzie. Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brins Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Francis?
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Meneses?
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Residence, Residency Committee presents the following resolution for the board's consideration, R one through R three.
Moved by Mrs. Menisi, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Scott Hayden. Mrs. Capiello, roll call.
Can I just make a comment? So with the information that Dr. Taylor shared with us this evening, so we've probably exited well over three hundred students in the last four or five years, so I guess we're moving in the right direction, and I know that we, we remove many, we have several hearings at times, but it's just that we're keeping our money in this district for our students that live here, so.
And I think it also addresses some of the safety issues that we were having, because there are students that didn't belong here, and, you know, that they're out, and some of them were students that were in altercation. So, really happy with what we're doing with the residency initiative.
And, Dr. Taylor, I'm just gonna ask, after the first of the year, at some point, will we be moving down to the middle schools for reregistration?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But I must add that we have to do it a little differently. This is a really time-consuming, rigorous process, and while it was helpful, gotta be a better way to do it, so we're gonna try to find a more efficient way.
I was gonna ask you that, if we're training other people to help with the reregistration process.
Absolutely. We are, yes, and also, we will wanna move to the elementary level before the end of the school year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We don't have any reports from technology?
We have, we have.
Yeah, you distracted me. Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brins Watson.
Yes.
Dr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie.
Yes.
Mrs. Menisi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Santana.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes. Any reports from technology?
No, this week.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the bills, please?
Some motion?
Moved by Ms. Brins Watson, seconded, please. Seconded by, where was the second? Okay, Ms. McKenzie. Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Mrs. Brins Watson.
Yes.
Dr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie.
Yes.
Mrs. Menisi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea.
Yes.
Ms. Santana.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Um, at this point, we have any unfinished business for the board members? No unfinished business? Okay. Any new business? No new business. All right, let's go to comments from the public. State your name and your address, and please adhere to the three-minute time.
Yes, ma'am.
David Armentio, ten thirty-two Woodland Avenue. Now, this is a, really a repeat from last week, but just a, a little bit more information added. Last night, the fifth class of the Union High School Athletic Hall of Fame was inducted, including Amanda Curtis, Christina Vil Saint, Darius Skeet, Diana Badger, Donald Dans, George Wade, Glenn Grant, Avine Cohen, Jim Crossda, Mark Ignatowicz, Ron Meyer, and Ted Zawaki. And their plaques will be placed in the hallway of honor in Union High School. And it's really nice to walk down that hallway and read about some of the people that have been inducted in the previous four classes. Secondly, the Sester Centennial, or more commonly called the Semi-Quinn Centennial, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the founding of our country, is coming in twenty-twenty-six. It'll come here faster than we want it to. The federal government is already making plans. On the state level, the New Jersey Historical Commission and the Crossroads of the Revolution have joined together in a public-private collaboration, which has been named Revolution NJ, to plan events. Union County has been meeting to plan events on the county level. The Union Township Historical Society is offering to collaborate with the Board of Education, and hopefully, along with the Township of Union, so that we too can plan some meaningful events. And let's do that before it's too late. And finally, more than eight-hundred-and-thirty people will be touched by the goodness of some Union High School students. And I'm reporting for the president of the Rotary Club, the Rotary, yeah, the Rotary Club. The Union High School Interact Club, directed by Dr. Ed Baffa, performed a tremendous act of giving. In conjunction with the Rotary Club of Union and Hillman Consulting, they held a Socktober Drive. Last year, the Interact Club collected one thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine pairs of new socks. This year, the members of the Rotary Club and Hillman, along with caring citizens, donated four-hundred-and-ninety-two pairs. Students and families at Livingston School collected two-hundred-and-sixty-one pairs. Union High School students donated nine-hundred-and-twelve pairs. And the joining of the forces collected a total of one thousand six-hundred-and-sixty-five pairs of new socks. And these socks will be donated to the Gateway Family YMCA. By the way, the socks will be delivered on November twenty-ninth to the Elizabeth YMCA for distribution to those in need. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Armentio.
Hello, Jill Hall, five oh nine Whitewood Road. I'm deliriously happy to hear conversations taking place in a meaningful way about restorative circles. It's been, I counted while I was sitting there, twenty-five years since I've been asking for that to happen. So I'll be waving the banner when that finally comes to pass. And I hope that it happens across the board, and really excited at the high school. I'd also love to see that happen, and perhaps in consideration of restructuring homeroom, so that kids could do that every single day in a restorative way, and perhaps having some built-in mentorship, and having homerooms be ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade included, building in that opportunity. If we're gonna think outside the box, we might as well go wild and shoot the whole thing. I wanted to report a student today, former student alumni, class of twenty-twenty, Marshawn Abuanga Smith, who is currently a junior at the University of Delaware, majoring in human physiology in the pre-med program there, and she hopes to become a cardiovascular, I'm not sure if it's a surgeon or just a cardiovascular physician. Came in to speak to our sophomores, sophomore health classes this morning. She could only give us a half a day. She volunteers for the New Jersey Sharing Network, and she came in to, to talk to our students who are preparing to get their, they're preparing to get their driver's permits, about the opportunity of considering being an organ donor. She spoke about her own personal story of relatives within her family. She was eloquent and fabulous, and it was just so nice to have our alumni come back. And she reached out to me a couple weeks ago, and she's like, I really wanna do this, I wanna come back to the school community and do this. And it was super well-received. I wanna thank the health, health teachers, who are always so flexible. I always wanna push in, they're always like, all right, I'm coming to phys ed teachers again, and they're wonderful. So, kudos to her. She said she will come back again, and she hopes to continue. But I think what's important was, when she talked about how well Union High School set her up for success at the University of Delaware and beyond, and she was so grateful. And it, it just helped the students to hear that, that when they leave here, they're gonna be ready for whatever comes next. So it was really a great morning, and so I got some pictures to share, and Marshawn did a great job, so, thank you.
Um, can you email me her information? Just because I just actually started a partnership with Share Network. You see, I'm wearing the bracelet.
I did.
Around the educational setting, about bringing them into schools and speaking to our students who are becoming licensed drivers, I'm getting their permit and stuff like that, around educating them around organ donation, and building that awareness and education within this community as a whole.
Absolutely.
So if you could just send me her email information, I would love to speak with her. Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to make a comment.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, so every time I think about Share, it reminds me of Jeremy Marash. That was one of our students that was hit on the corner of my house, and he, Share is, he lives on through Share. So I just wanted to, I heard it, and I wanted to say his name.
Thank you, Ms. Santana.
Thank you.
That was a rough one. Any other comments from the public?
Ann Margaret Shannon, twenty-five ninety-one Spruce Street, Union, and the UTA president. Just comment about EDP. Dr. Taylor mentioned the need for more counselors. I also wanted to ask that we increase the number of teachers, because they need your support. It is very difficult, as you heard, they're teaching to another teacher's plan, so it's very difficult to follow another teacher's plans, especially when each student could potentially have a different teacher. Another reason it's difficult is because they teach multiple levels in one classroom, and as a math teacher, I can tell you, algebra is very different than geometry. So if we could get more teachers and they could just specialize, that would be helpful. I also wanna emphasize the importance of creating strong and trusting partnerships. F thirty-six is such an example. The UTA has been working for a while now with the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, discussing how they can mentor our students. In addition to the five workshops listed, the UTA will finance what I call the two-heavy hitter programs, because they're very expensive. But on February eleventh, Project Alpha is a full day of activities that help our teenagers learn about making good choices and being a good citizen, and it ends with a gala dinner at the Galloping Hill Golf Course. The second thing we're gonna take care of is the Stock Market Challenge, which is a series of meetings to teach our students about finances. And there will be a competition with six students, who will each win one thousand dollars to invest in the real stock market. So the UTA is very proud to have brokered this partnership among Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity, the Board of Education, and the UTA, and we are looking forward to its success.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, Ms. Shannon. I'm so tired, I'm sorry. But I did wanna say, before Mr. Vanzo comes up, that we did sit down, Mrs. Menisi and I sat down with Ms. Shannon and Mr. Dow, and once they told us about the program, I could not wait for them to come in and present to the board. So, thank you again for, you know, bringing us into it and letting us know about the program. I think it's gonna be fantastic for our kids.
Good evening. Rich Tavanzo, UTA Vice President. First question I wanna bring up, an F twenty-four approved professional development for K through five teachers, okay, which stated about using the iReady Classroom and iReady Math Core. Wouldn't be, it be part of the new program to include whoever's coming in from iReady to give professional development? Why are we paying an additional twelve thousand five hundred dollars for that cost? Because I'm pretty aware of previous years, you know, some new program came in, and whoever was coming in from, you know, that company to provide that professional development. So I'm just curious of why there's a cost when it comes to the iReady. Also, a week and a half ago was the Teachers Convention down Atlantic City in particular. Besides some of the moving speakers that came and spoke, Governor Murphy did show up, and if you're not aware, that he passed an executive order that the task force was going to look in for basically, you know, the shortage of educators here in the state, not just in the country. And he's looking for answers, hopefully by the end of January. We'll see where that goes regarding that, because that is obviously an ongoing problem, besides, you know, which we've always stated, trying to retain the teachers we have, that they don't leave to go to other districts, which of course leads to, you know, especially with a lot of teachers that are close to retirement, they go to other districts for the last couple of years, and make sure they get that little increase of salary for a couple of years, and, you know, so there's not enough new educators coming in to replace them, and that's, that's pretty, pretty much the biggest concern. The Commissioner of Education was also there, and I can't share anything with you, because she didn't really bring anything substance to that conversation. It was, it was, to say the least, that offices and the state is, to say the least, embarrassing. And it's a shame, that it's hap, that it's occurring right now through all this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vanzo. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
Madam President?
Yes.
If I may, just a quick comment. And I'm sorry that I did not have the opportunity to say this before Mrs. Bossard left, but I just wanted to congratulate her and her leadership team on a very, very successful harvest dance. It was across the grades, from what I understand, and about five hundred students.
About four hundred and seventy-three, but who's counting?
And it was a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Very successful. I just, you know, it was great to hear that the students were able to do this and, and enjoy themselves for the evening. It was amazing. So congratulations to her.
Great comment. Counsel, do we need to go into executive session?
No, we do not.
Wow! Okay.
There is a God.
With that being said, can someone make a motion?
I was, I was expecting to go, just to say, I had questions.
Can someone make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so it's moved by Ms. Brins Watson, seconded by Ms. McKenzie. Mrs. Capiello, roll call, please.
Wait, wait, wait.
No, no, for executive session, I'll wait, it's all right. No, 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 they were specifically for executive session.
Did you wanna?
Let's go.
We're gonna go into executive.
Do we need to kill the motion on the floor?
Yes.
And go?
Yes, let's, let's kill it.
Repeal the motion to adjourn. Can somebody make a motion to go into executive session, please?
I don't know whether we go into executive session.
Second.
Ms. McKenzie.
Is this personnel or litigation?
Litigation.
Okay, litigation.
Every day, litigation. Always litigation.
Fair enough, and then action may be taken when the board returns to the session.
Okay. Ms. McKenzie motioned, Ms. Brins Watson seconded. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Brins Watson.
Yes.
Dr. Francis.
Yes.
Ms. McKenzie. Mrs. Menisi.
Yes.
Mr. O'Shea. Ms. Santana.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott Hayden.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
That one was one.
Yeah, it's not.
Yeah, it's called.